A motion. Does anybody want to make a motion on the general fund budget?
I will move the general fund budget is presented.
Motion from Council Gabrielson to move forward. The budget as included in tonight's agenda, which has proposed expenditures of eighteen million, three hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred sixty-seven dollars, not including an overlay in revenues of nine million, nine hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars, that that be set for a vote of the town council on Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty at seven P. M. via Zoom meeting. Is there a second for that?
I'll second it to get it moving.
Council Devereaux seconds. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Matt.
If I just may have a moment, I just want to let you know Council Jordan is having internet connectivity issues and that's why she had to bail out there for a moment. So she may be able to join us.
Okay.
Just in case.
Wait a second. While we're waiting for her, I'll note, and it's included in the packet with tonight's agenda items, that when combined with the current proposed school department budget, the total net to tax increase would move from nineteen dollars and sixty-eight cents on the mill rate to nineteen dollars, eighty-six cents, an increase of eighteen cents or just under one percent at point nine zero percent. Factoring the valuation basis, that brings it down even another three hundreds of a percent. So we're looking at approximately a point eight seven, a point nine percent increase to the total tax rate. I know that there's been some attention paid to some of the factors that that go into the budget, including increases in expenses for both municipal and school department. But the the bottom line net to tax increase that's proposed with the municipal budget as presented here tonight and the proposed school budget, which remains to be voted on, is what I just mentioned about point nine percent. So. Let me see. I still don't see Penny having joined us back. Is there any council that wishes to offer any discussion? Go ahead, Council Devereaux.
I wanted to talk a little bit about the turf at Hennepin. We discussed that thoroughly previously and we had a report that the field is still, looks like it's still usable. So I'm curious if going to leave this on. I thought we were going to put it on for next year's budget. So Matt, could you speak to that?
I would be happy to. I just, I think, let's see, I just want to make sure. I just promoted Bob Malley up to be a panelist as well with us and he can talk some about the testing that was performed because we actually had. Sorry, I was just clicking some buttons in the background to get Bob up to speed with us. We had testing performed a week or so after the after the council workshop on that. The results came back, actually less than positive. Many of the ratings were greater than the allowable range, which, as you may recall, is, I think, two hundred is the ceiling as to where you want to be above. And many of the testing spots were were at or exceeding that level. And then the one bright spot or the lowest point that we did have was the point that we did the patching on last year. So I think the, looking at the testing as well as the other memos, the recommendation from them would be that we would want to replace the field this year as scheduled. And Bob, if you could, if you could jump in and talk about the GMX test and it took place in your conversations with our testing company. And by the way, in the importance of of objectivity, the the testing firm is not the same company that would be selling us the new turf, obviously. So we went through an outside source to have that that testing performed. So to try to make sure that we got to, we got the results that were the most objective and honest that we could find.
Thank you, Matt. We did a GMX testing test on the field on April fourteenth, shortly after the last budget hearing. And as Matt said, the the test came back, the average test came back. I believe the score was one eighty-two out of a score of two hundred. And so we're kind of reaching the 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 safety threshold with the field. And, you know, two hundred is sort of the the metric that they use for being, you know, the worst case scenario. So from a testing standpoint alone, you know, we're getting closer to that threshold, you know, where this where their play on the field, you know, could be a safety issue, frankly.
Okay, my understanding, though, is we're at one eighty-two, we're not quite at two hundred. And are we going to have, my guess is, we're not going to have football this year. Will there be any sports playing at all on the field? Is this something that we can put off a year since we're not at the two hundred point yet? And then my next question is, if we do borrow the three hundred and twenty-five thousand, John Q, what are we looking at? Is now a good time to borrow that? Or would next year possibly be better? Just curious about that.
Well, Bob left, so I guess it's up to me. In terms of borrowing, this is your best environment, your best rates right now. There's no way of knowing. The the Chair of the Fed Reserve has indicated that he expects the recovery to take until late two thousand and twenty-one, that this will not be a V-shaped recovery. That being the case, if we're able to put it on, if we pick it up this summer, first of all, we make the first installment as part of the the buy down. And then we have four years of annual payments on the on the borrowed amount. And given where interest rates are right now, that's why I propose that we go with the refunding of the outstanding two thousand and eight bonds. We're guesstimating a rate of about two and a half percent, which is significantly lower than the current four and a half percent that we're currently paying on those two thousand and eight bonds. If we can pick up three hundred and twenty-five thousand at two percent for four years, we'd be in very good position.
Okay.
And in regards to sports, Council Devereaux and I've seen estimates all over the place when it comes to what to expect in the fall season from that, you know, where in company in New York counties would maybe opening later because we have a higher prevalence of the virus in this area versus, you know, some conversations where they, the end, like the, I was looking on the Maine Principals Association website this weekend, and they've even eliminated the hands-off period this summer so they can allow coaches to be able to work with their athletes in anticipation of the fall season. So I think at this point, they're they're not a hundred percent sure as to what direction. It depends upon the day, I think, quite frankly, as to as to where where they are relating to high school sports or or sports that would be taking place there. So you'd have, you know, field hockey and soccer and football would be the primary uses on the on the on the turf field in the in the fall.
Matt and or John, could either of you, number one, address, were this expense to come out of the budget, it would have a fairly negligible, based on the financing scheme that you just spoke to in a little bit of detail, it would have a fairly minimal impact overall on on the amount of tax increase and budget overall, correct, because of how it's being financed?
Yes, sir, about half a penny.
And then the second thing, I know, Matt, you were in discussions, and I think Bob might have been part of those discussions as well, with the superintendent, perhaps the athletic director. I know that there was some concern raised when we discussed this at length during our budget workshops about the go-forward planning for, you know, eventual replacement of this replacement. And so can you talk a little bit about that as well?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Chairman.
How it, how that differs from how we've been planning for it in the past?
Happy to. And Bob can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think initially, the town and the school both put in, I think, seven thousand, five hundred dollars each in the early years, and then they adjusted that to ten thousand dollars later. And over the past twelve to fourteen years, they've been putting that amount in consistently. Since the conversation with council at the workshop earlier this year regarding the budget process, in a going-forward manner, I've spoken with Superintendent Wolfram and said, you know, the plan that that I think we should take from this point forward would be to, you know, figure out, okay, if you if you know you're going to have roughly twelve years for a field, that's kind of, that breaks down to fifty thousand dollars a year. What we need to do is find a way that the school puts in X amount of dollars and the town puts in Y amount of dollars to accomplish that fifty grand per year savings or at least capital project set aside. And then in twelve years, you have it fully funded at that point, and you wouldn't have to replace it with any kind of borrowed money or anything along those lines. So that way you'd be funding the program all the way along and you'd have no, you know, basically, like you would with anything else. If you know your furnace is going to go in X amount of years, you're going to set aside a hundred dollars a year for the for fifteen, eighteen years and and be ready to to flip that card over when it's there in an interest-bearing account. So that's kind of, that was the recommended plan going forward after this after this year.
And Bob, I know you included a lot of detail in your memo, as well as some breakdown of estimated costs. But just for the benefit of this meeting and the record, can you just give a high-level summary, as you did in your memo, about your comparative evaluation of natural grass fields or or multiple natural grass fields that we would need to have more regularly ready for play as opposed to the the multi-sport turf field that we use today?
Absolutely. Well, one clarification for Council Devereaux, the test score, I was looking at one that was done in twenty eighteen. The latest test score that we did in April was one eighty-eight. So it's a point of clarification. I think in my memo, what I tried to sort of make the case for is, it really depends on the sport that's being played and on the particular field it's being played. There are sort of a higher maintenance cost depending on that situation. The the luxury of the turf field is that it allows you to play regardless of weather conditions. It doesn't have to be painted like a natural field does. It doesn't have to be mowed. It doesn't have to be treated with pesticides if that's an issue. So and not to say that it's maintenance-free. It requires a different type of maintenance. It requires a grooming process that we do a couple times a year, which is a contract that we share with the with the the school department. So a natural field, depending on the type of field, and our fields are all a little bit different depending on when they were built and the soil conditions and the the compaction issues with them, all of them sort of require a little bit different care. But when you have to paint lines on, it's it's much more labor-intensive. The mowing program alone is labor-intensive. You know, if you have a heavy rainstorm and you have a football game the previous or the next night, you could do a lot of turf damage to the field. So what we're seeing is that if you, the sports that we play on the natural fields may require additional sodding, for example, for football and for lacrosse, which is played in the spring. So if you add those up, it's more out of pocket up front. Obviously, when you have the turf field, there's the replacement of the mat, which happens every twelve to fifteen years. So again, it's 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 comes at more of a capital outlay on on the synthetic portion of it. But when you have a natural field, you're going to be, you know, spending more money on an annual basis for restoration of those surfaces. Is that?
Thanks. Thanks, Bob. Are there other folks that want to comment on this particular budget item? Is there other general discussion on the general fund budget? Go ahead, Valerie.
I was just looking at our state revenue. For twenty twenty, it shows a million, two twenty-one. And for twenty twenty-one, you have it forecasted at a million, four fourteen. And I'm just wondering what you're basing those assumptions on. John, do you have, and did we, what did we receive in state revenues the last couple of months? And are we going to, do you know if we're going to be receiving our state revenues as budgeted for this year?
John, I don't mind jumping in on this. And then if you want to clean up afterwards for any mistakes I may or may not make, we're tracking close to full receivables, I think, for for revenue sharing for this year in the current budget. And then one of the areas that we have for next year and part of the increase is based on revenue sharing estimates. We still adjusted those down from the previous provided amounts from the state earlier back in or back in back in March when they came forward their FY twenty-one estimates. They had us in the in the high hundreds to anticipate to receive. We adjusted that downward by almost fifteen percent to what we are anticipating. And that was based on conversations with other managers and what the what the historical adjustments have been. So we've already booked those those adjustments down, but we're still anticipating to receive more next year than we did in the current year's budget. So that's one area that that you find the most growth in from last or from the current budget to next year's budget. So we're still anticipating getting more because they they changed the, not due to them receiving a lot more in revenue, but because they're changing the anticipated percent that they're going to be allocating to communities from, say, three percent to three point seven five percent this year, I think, is the is the amount. So that change in and of itself, we shall see, even with with an adjustment downward, we we should still anticipate getting more from from the state when it comes to revenue sharing. But we have already, we have already cooked in that those adjustments earlier into the budget, in the second round budget that we provided. That's when we made that adjustment.
What what happens if we don't receive the one point four? Don't we just pull from our?
We'd end up curtailing our spending, for sure, on that. And I think the state, of all the revenues, the ones that I have the most confidence in are probably the state revenues when it comes, push comes to shove on that. There are other areas that I am concerned about and that related mostly to the park with our bus bus revenues that I think we may see that come down as well as our parking revenue. But I think we did adjust parking revenues down as well to to forecast the decline in that as well.
Okay.
But yeah, we've adjusted that as well as excise taxes. We adjusted that back down to actuals, as you can see, to what we're looking at this year. So we, if we're looking at normal, we're probably at about two point three, two point three and a half for revenues there. But we adjusted that downward by a significant amount as well. And that was insistent on tracking that historically, other managers and towns have seen during, actually went to a seminar on it, and they showed like the different impacts over three different recessions and how they how they attract. So I thought our adjustments were in line, if not a little bit more aggressive than what what they had identified.
I saw that you did that. I think that's that's really wise. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Matt and John, both of those things you were just speaking to were were downward forecasts on both state revenue and excise tax, et cetera. I did read either today or yesterday about further proposed federal package that would potentially deliver two billion dollars to the state of Maine, intended for state and local government. Have either, I know it's very early on any of that stuff and still a lot of negotiating to be be done in Washington. But have either of you heard anything relative to any federal revenue, which we currently show is almost zero in the budget here?
Right. I can speak on that better probably after tomorrow. And I'm taking part of a conversation with Cumberland County and New York County managers, we're pulling together and a lot of the information I already have ready, quite frankly. We're looking to have a meeting scheduled with Senator Collins to discuss this exact impact on towns and cities across the state of Maine. And throughout the process, we've tracked and kept a very detailed listing of the items that we've taken off, as you noticed with the memo I sent out earlier this evening and have with the packet tonight, to show the level of all the different capital programs and capital projects that we that we have removed, as well as the reduction in revenues that we are anticipating. And we've got that all atomized. So the felt, Senator Collins' office felt that it would be more productive to have that data versus the the anecdotal evidence of saying towns and cities are going to get hammered in their budgets and not having the actual data to back it up. So we have that ready or I have it ready, at least for Cape Elizabeth. I can't speak for the other towns, but I I would feel they would be ready for that as well. But we'll be ready to provide that information. So she'll be able to make a more informed decision, at least from the from her seat as Senator for the state of Maine. So hopefully that'll that'll help advance that discussion further.
Yeah, on a parallel track, I can report that the Maine Municipal Association's Legislative Policy Committee is working to gain some traction on getting meetings and audiences with either the congressional leadership or their staff to make a case for for very many of the same points that you just did, Matt. And April Humphrey, who's on the town council in Yarmouth, some of you also may have received an email that she sent out, I think, last week. And I've responded to her that is finance chair for our council, I'll plan, and also as the LPC rep, current LPC rep to the MMA, that I would certainly join in on any efforts that are undertaken and initiatives to to either gain a meeting or or, you know, make any case to try and get anything that either the town or the region, you know, would benefit from from any of those things. So so I think, glad to hear, Matt, that you're engaged on that. Not not surprised to hear that you are. And I think hopefully that message can be delivered from from multiple organizations. Go ahead, Matt.
One other item that I think it's important for the council to to know of, and that this is more of a reminder because we've spoken about it in the past, but we do have and we're building on having a steady ball plan of shovel-ready projects that in case there is federal stimulus that comes forward, that can help us with infrastructure needs or other needs that we may find, that we are ready and aggressively prepared to jump on top of any opportunities. Case in point would be the Kettle Cove drainage project as well as the ADA accessible ramp, phase two, if something like that becomes available. Streetlight project that we put off until next year. So and then we have a couple other ones as well in the queue that we'd be ready to pull the trigger on if if the federal stimulus comes forward for that. So we are ready to ready to do that if such an opportunity provides itself.
Other discussion on the general fund budget? Last call? All right. Chris, go ahead.
I raised my hand digitally.
I'm not seeing the raised hands, Matt, in the panelists, I guess, for some reason. So if if you are, if you could raise your hand visually, too, that would help.
Sounds good. So my recollection from the discussions at the workshop is that a good number of the town councillors were not in favor of the turf field replacement being included in the budget. I continue to be opposed to it. Nothing I've seen has convinced me that we should be including it in the budget this year. So I would just ask that for the actual vote meeting, you have a version of all of this put together that does not include the turf field so that we can have that ready to vote on otherwise. And in conjunction with that, I also, as as you will all recall, we have a general fund fund balance policy that basically says the general fund, once it exceeds a particular amount, we're supposed to take certain steps and do things to reduce taxes and offer tax relief or otherwise focus on capital improvement projects. So in the past, I have voiced support for the, basically looking at what long-term projects we have in spending the, as that fund balance has grown above what the the limit, focusing on capital projects because the taxpayers have already paid out the money and we have a list of projects that need to be done. So we should just be using that money to basically do ongoing maintenance in the town that we'll have to pay for eventually. I would be interested for this upcoming vote, though, following the other option in the policy. So I'd like to see, prepared for the vote, a version that A, removes the turf field from the expenditures for the capital improvements, and then B, also zeros out the overall tax rate so that there's no tax increase this year in accomplishing that via our fund balance policy. That's it.
And Chris, can I just ask you to clarify, when you say zero out, are you talking about zeroing out the municipal obligation or zeroing out the total net to the taxpayer?
Total net to taxpayer. If we were to completely follow the the policy from the, my recollection is the policy came about after all that Tabor stuff happened, I could have that wrong. But basically, if we were to completely follow the policy in the sense of dropping it down to a level, I frankly, I don't agree with what it suggests. I like us being conservative. But basically, it would be us, we'd reduce the tax, the overall tax rate on the municipal side by like twenty percenters. I'm making that number up. But it would be a big jump. We'd have a big decrease as a one-year payouts to the taxpayers. I don't support doing that. But I do support decreasing enough that across the board, everyone, both with the municipal and the school, it becomes a complete to the taxpayers, a zero percent increase for the year. That that answer the question?
Yep. No, I just wanted to be clear whether you were talking about the total net impact to the taxpayer or the net impact of the municipal budget. So thank you very much. Is there other discussion? Council Devereaux?
I agree with Chris. I'd like to see a total zero increase, net increase to the taxpayer. I think that's really important in this coming year. And I'm just curious with the project of the the lights that we're going to switch out to LED that we put off till next year. What kind of a savings is that by having the LED lights? It sounds like that's something that would be very cost-effective because it would create a savings for us. So I'm curious why you shelved that project when I see it as a savings in the future.
We, well, considering it was roughly two hundred thousand dollars, it was one of the larger ticket items that we did have. It would pay for itself over, I believe, the estimated time was somewhere between five and six years is what it would take for it to zero to zero out. So as far as looking at wants versus needs, ultimately, that seems like a need that could be pushed off for a year. And that's why when we were looking to try to find savings across any opportunity, that was, you know, we could end up making a smaller change in a smaller department or a number of fifty thousand dollar changes in different or twenty-five thousand dollar changes across multiple departments. Or we could find, you know, impactful savings in one fell swoop with that. And and we still have the same service. We would just have to carry the incandescent lighting for another for an additional year, but we'd be ready to pull that for next year. Additionally, though, if if an opportunity shows up, such as grant funding or things along those lines during the year, I'll pursue that as well to try to have that as an opportunity. So I did look into that earlier with efficiency main and other areas to see if there are any grants. That's not an area that they currently participate in, at least as far as providing assistance to towns. They thought it was a good idea, but they didn't have any money for it. But that's, that was the reason why I pulled that because it made the greatest impact on it.
Further discussion? Jeremy?
So so just as a point of clarification, pushing on the table is that is to set a public hearing for the budget as it was presented here. Do we need a second motion or an then sort of an amendment to also present another version of the agenda as proposed by Council? of the agenda as proposed by Counselor Straw?
I don't want to put words in your mouth, Chris, but what I think you're suggesting is just to have all of that at the ready, so that, in the event that a majority favors either of the things that Chris was talking about, that those numbers would be prepared to adopt. So should the number that's being put forth to vote on not have majority support, that we'd just be prepared to vote on an alternative, as opposed to having to do the math on the fly? Matt?
Just as a point of order, the council may want to understand that this year, the use of fund balance and carry forwards is roughly $2 million to the current budget. And that's to help offset tax increase, as well as pay for capital projects across the board. So we haven't taken a blind eye to using our surplus or carry forwards. So the only concern I would have is that, is that we really aggressively impact the unassigned fund balance in this year, and then next year, if we do have a continued recession, that you have a one-year offset, and then year two, you're in a heck of a pickle because you don't have the ability to go back there. So that would be my one concern. We may want to think about having, carrying at least a couple months' worth of revenues to offset that, maybe adjust the policy that way to have more, and then assign more funds. And John and I have been talking about this, to allocate funds going forward for next year's capital planning, to start pushing those into those designated areas to offset those expenses in the years to come. So it has been a lively discussion point between John and I over the past two months, to say the least.
So, Matt, I was just looking, and I can't find my sticky that I've jotted this down on before, but you had given us a ballpark number of, to reduce impact to taxes by, I think it was by a tenth of a percent or 1%. It was like $17,000 or 13,000. I forget what the number was. Can you remind me?
Yes, roughly 17. It's, if, the cheat sheet on that is looking at the overall municipal valuation.
Right.
Pro forma, and at 172 or, gee, sorry. Let's see, 1%. It's like roughly 17,429.
Oh, right, there it is. I see it. It's in the, yeah. So for every, for every 17-plus that we reduce, it brings it down a penny.
Yep.
Right? So let me do a quick math. 149,165 times.
175,000.
Yeah, yeah. So, and what is the current unassigned fund balance?
That's where we'll tap on, to John, for the exact number on that. I know he has his laptop there.
It's over 5 million right now. And given the current policy, which calls for 1/12, which is about $1,700,000, and if we're using 2 million, we're getting down. By the time we complete this budget, as it's being presented, there will be, I think the number is $453,000 above the 1/12 target fund balance. Matthew and I have spoken, I told him I'm going to suggest that we revisit the policy, because the way it's set up, using 1/12 of the revenue stream, that gives you sufficient to carry you for a month, and we've already been in this emergency situation now for two months, we're looking at least at another month, plus there'll be, as Valerie's pointed out, lost revenues coming from the state, we anticipate. So that, I think we am going to recommend that the council revisit the fund balance policy, and that it be increased from 1/12 to at least 1/6, which would be two months of lost revenues to carry us forward in the future.
So if I, just to play back what you just said, so with the plan drawdown in the current budget as presented, we get to somewhere north of $400,000 above the current policy. That's right?
Right. And the current policy would be approximately 1.7 million.
Yeah, okay.
And there was also a significant portion of that 5 million that was supplementally appointed, appropriated, rather, in this year's budget. There's about 2 million that's being used in this year's budget already. So that's why that is coming down much more than you'd otherwise expect it to.
Chris, did you have a follow-up point?
Yeah, so just, I think that's a good recommendation from Q and Matt. And going forward, I definitely would support switching it to two months from the one month. With respect to how to make all this happen this year, so again, to restate my prior opposition to the turf field, we made the kindergarteners pay for the playground that every single, well, say, tongue-in-cheek kindergarteners, we made the Pond Cove families and the rest of the community pay. We made everyone pony up through private fundraising for the Pond Cove playground. And there wasn't the fundraising apparatus that's already in place for the various high school sports that use the turf field. So they already have the apparatus in place to pay for a share of that field. It doesn't make sense to me that we're going to pony up all the money when they already have the fundraising structure to come up with a good portion. So why not have them pay at least the same percentage that the Pond Cove families had to pay to help with the playground? So that's the position I'm coming from. And if you take that position and basically say, hey, you're not going to be playing sports in the fall anyway, potentially, use that time to do your share of the fundraising. Them coming up with that, let's say we make the math super easy, looking at this pro forma sheet, say that they have to come up with 343,000, that's 1% of the tax rate. So accomplishing, how do we get a 0% increase? We simply say 343,000 of the budget costs for that field, that 600,000 expenditure has to be raised privately. And if they do that, there we go. We now have a flat tax, right? 0%, simply by saying, you guys have to come up with approximately 340,000 for this project. And it then also doesn't end up pulling more money out of the general fund. We keep the general fund 343,000 higher. We provide equality and parity with what happened at Pond Cove, by having the people that actually use the facility pay for it, rather than the taxpayers. And at the same time, then, the actual taxpayers end up having the 0% tax increase.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yes, Chairman, thank you. I understand Counselor Straw's discussion point, however, it wouldn't say the 300-some-odd thousand in this year's budget is actually be 65, because it'd be the one-fifth of the payment. Just to point it out, so sorry.
Yes, looking at the way that you've structured it, yes. I see your point, but I still argue from my perspective.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure, make sure.
Good point.
Make sure, I wanted to make sure that I was honest with the number on that. I didn't want you to have unanticipated consequences.
I also am curious, Counselor Straw, if we were not using a turf field, would you be looking to have all of the boosters contribute to the annual maintenance and operating costs for natural turf fields?
Well, when I ran the numbers on the natural turf fields, using what was in that document, it looks like, to me, the natural turf field is a lot cheaper than the artificial field. Maybe I did my math wrong, but I did 600,000 divided by the 12 years this thing survived, and that's 50,000 a year it's costing us, not counting the 5,000, 10,000 we're spending on annual maintenance as well. So we're looking at 55,000, 60,000 a year. And yes, the maintenance costs for the field for regular grass was somewhere between like 20 to 30, but a lot of that was duplicative from one sport to the next. They're all sharing the single field still. It still comes in cheaper than the artificial, unless I did my math wrong.
Well, they're not sharing a single field is part of the problem, because there, it's multiple fields.
But as it is right now, they're all able to share the field. The idea that we need-
Which they can't do with natural turf fields.
Why not?
Bob, do you want to speak to that again? But part of the issue is condition of the field and some of the resting requirements and things like that, as well as playability of a natural surface versus a synthetic surface. So.
Well, yeah, they can't play on the same field, because you have soccer and you have football that are playing at the same time. You have lacrosse that's happening. So there's going to be, would definitely be some conflicts. It's just not feasible for them to play all on one field. Just the wear and tear on the field would be incredible, and it would be unplayable after a certain point. That's why we spread them over the natural turf fields. It really comes down to, you know, on the hand of field, and I understand Counselor Straw's concerns about contributions from groups and, you know, moving forward, hopeful that the field, you know, will be included in the budget and approved. Your next sort of funding program, you know, you could put the booster clubs sort of on notice that you have X number of years to raise, X number of thousands of dollars, and plan for your next replacement. I just don't know if they have the capabilities now of coming up with that type of funding, but that's something that you could do in the future and give them 10 years to raise 10,000 or 20,000, whatever that number is, and also increase the contribution from the school department and from the municipal side of the budget, so we don't have this shortfall on the next round. But, you know, again, is my concern is really a safety issue with the field, and the testing, you know, reflects that. So I think that's my primary concern of, you know, proposing that we do the field this summer.
Yeah, and I would add, too, that, you know, this was part of a planned replacement program. And so, you know, pardon the lame sports pun, but, I mean, this is literally moving the goalposts, you know, at the end of the fourth quarter. And, you know, I just think it's, if it further, you know, puts us in a precarious situation of having no viable fields at all, should there be athletics in the fall? Because if there's not the ability to raise the funds and commit to the project, which I think in a short amount of time, we'd be unable to do, and we don't have a safely playable field as it currently stands without replacement, then, you know, if we are in a situation where there are sports to be played, we don't have anywhere to play those games. And so I'm not, I'm not sure how, I think it's, you know, almost the definition of being, you know, penny-wise and pound foolish on this. The other thing I would just remind Counselor Straw about, too, was the amount that both the town council voted to appropriate for the Pond Cove project, as well as the school department. And on a balanced percentage basis, I think that the, while, you know, I certainly contributed and was happy to, and I know many other families in town did as well, on a percentage basis, that was not nearly the full cost of that project.
Can I respond?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I totally agree, which is why I would understand the town pitching in a portion of the overall cost of the project. But with respect to the moving the goalposts, I guess I do agree that the goalposts have been moved, but my view is that the moving of the goalposts is not requiring the kids' turf group that originally funded this thing to cover the cost of the replacement. Because I thought, and again, I could be totally wrong, but I thought that when this thing went in, they had agreed, or at least the town council had said something along the lines of, you guys have to come up with a plan for covering the replacement cost. I thought that was the original plan in '06, '08, or whenever this was. So it seems to me the goalpost moving is suddenly saying, oh, now the town's going to cover the replacement. Because the idea was, I thought, and again, maybe I'm totally, I'm misremembering history, but I thought they were supposed to cover the replacement cost. So the goalpost moving is us taking an audit instead of them.
Well, the town and the school have both jointly been contributing to a replacement account for the entirety since the turf was installed. So it's not just the town that's on the hook for replacing it to begin with. But I don't specifically know the history, and maybe either Bob or Matt or other councillors that were involved want to weigh in on that. But I do know that, over the last many number of years, there's been contributions to a planned replacement fund, as there would be going forward, and it sounds like, with adjusted parameters, to have a more equitable distribution of the revenue that's contributed to that. But Bob or Matt or any other councillor that wants to speak to the history of it, go ahead.
Jamie, what they did fund was an extended service contract for work on the field, and I think it carried us, you know, at least five years and possibly eight. But it was a sort of, it paid for the maintenance, the annual grooming. So we had conversations about, you know, okay, how are we going to care for the field? And recognizing that, they did pay for that maintenance contract initially, for the maintenance of the field. But I don't recall a discussion about them putting money aside for the eventual replacement of them.
Penny?
Caitlin, did you want to go?
I tried raising my hand in the raise-your-hand feature.
It's not consistently coming up. I'm not ignoring you guys. So again, if you're, if you could raise your hand visually, too, that would be helpful to me. I don't know why it's not coming up for me, but.
But I was just, basically, wanted to say what you said a lot, Jamie, was moving the goalposts. We have been putting money into this fund every year since that turf really went in, knowing that we were going to pay for the replacement. It's been in the plan. I think it's really not very nice of some councillors to be deciding, we've been putting money aside, putting money aside, now we're just not going to do it. We're going to turn around and tell sports boosters that they've got like a couple weeks to come up with thousands of dollars to replace this field on time? That's not fair. Just like Bob said, you guys want to do something like that, then you do it for the next field. But we have already had a plan in place for a decade that we were going to replace this field when it needed to be replaced. And if you want the boosters to pay for the next one, then you tell them now, so that they can do it in 10 years when the next field needs to be replaced. This is not giving anybody any warning. I mean, really, we've got to replace this field very soon, if I remember from Bob's comments, so that it is ready to go by fall. And let's hope we have sports. Let's hope we have sports in fall. Like, that would be best-case scenario. If not, then at least we'll be able to use the field, right? So I just, guys need to be thinking, like, fairness here.
Penny?
Okay. I'm going to talk about moving goalposts, because there were some extenuating circumstances that influenced the, I think, my thinking around the turf field, and that has to do with current economic times. Now, that had an implication into moving goalposts. And I would stress that if what we are going to do is come up with a strategy that this discussion doesn't happen in the future, then the plan that's put in place needs to be based on learnings from this situation, which says there are things that can happen in the future that we may not be aware of. And so therefore, whatever plan is put in place has to consider what inflation of costs would be, what other things could influence that those dollars may be challenged in some way. So I would suggest that. I think that, from my perspective, what has happened is that we are having to scrutinize all of our expenditures. And I don't know if we have the votes to even put this, to fund this turf at this point in time. So I think Chris's suggestion as to when we go to vote, we need to have a view of what it's like with and without. And I understand your 65,000 over five years, Matt. I understand that as well, and I will factor that into my decision. But I think that we need to be very cautious about what we're doing with our municipal budget, our investments in the- cautious about what we're doing with our municipal budget, our, our investments in few, in the projects that we always take pride in being ahead of and not having to be behind the power curve. Because what's going to happen is we're going to be in, in 2022, and I worry about everything's going to be queued up. And we're going to have to then figure out how we solve the problem. And I'm expecting more stimulus dollars, et cetera, et cetera. I'm hoping for it, I should say. And hopefully we won't be in that situation. But, and I will go on the record of saying this, but if I don't see the schools pony something up, I am going to be extremely disappointed in that group of people. Because we have gutted this municipal budget. And I think to some extent, there are things that have been taken out of this budget that we need to be very cautious about. So that's kind of where I stand at this point in time.
Council of Devereaux.
Penny makes a really good point. We've gutted this budget and I'm hoping that the school board has looked at that budget and really worked it also. But I also want to point out, Chris talks about the analogy of Poncove Playground, how, how they put in all the money and Hannaford hasn't, but they did the fundraising at the beginning to put the field in, just like Poncove did this. And I think that in our budget now, we've got, we've got tennis courts at the high school for 40 grand this year. We have the track field for 60 grand. No one said a word about that. Do we have, so what do we do? We have track team fundraiser to, to fix the track field. We have the basketball team fundraiser because we had to redo the basketball courts when we had that water damage. Do we have volleyball fundraiser? I, I, I just don't think that's the approach we want to take. I think that the turf field is important. It's, it's a safety precaution. It's, we have a lot of different sports being played on that field. I think that the maintenance, Bob did a wonderful job with that spreadsheet for us, showing us the maintenance, the costs that are involved with regular grass fields. And it really looks like the turf field is the way to go all the way around. Yes, it's a big expense. If we could put it off a year, great. But like Matt said, it's 65,000. I don't see anybody upset with the track field, which is 60 grand this year. Nobody's talking about volleyball fundraising for volleyball courts. So I, I think we need to step back and say, yes, it's a big expense. The school needs to help participate in it. But it's something that we're going to have to do. If we don't do it this year, it's going to have to be, I'm guessing next year. And if we can get the money at a really good rate and it's 65,000, then this might be the year to do it.
Just a second, Matt. I, I, I agree with you, Council of Devereaux. And a couple of things I, I want to, A, just reiterate, I said it at the workshop when we discussed this at length, and I'll reiterate it just for this meeting for anyone who's a different audience listening. But I do not have an athlete that participates in a sport that uses this turf field. I just wanted to make that clear. Number two is I, I, what frustrates me whenever we get into a discussion about the turf field is I think this lingering perception that it is somehow a luxury item. And that I just, I, I wholeheartedly disagree with. It is a standard of a playing surface, particularly in a northern New England community, where you have weather and, and other factors that severely reduce the, you know, window in which you have to play some of these sports. And the ability for a natural turf surface to recover, be restored and, and still be safely playable. I think the information that's been provided to us has made a clear and compelling case for me around the safety issues associated with the current playing surface. That frankly is, is enough for me, knowing that, you know, we, we don't have what I consider to be a currently safely playable surface where sports to start on time in the fall without, without, at the very least, spending more money to patch all the areas that, that failed the, the G max test. And then the last thing, I, I will just again reiterate the point that the schools in their budgeting have had skin in the game for this and will continue to have skin in the game for this. But over the last number of years that it's been budgeted as part of the replacement account fund, it has been equally funded by the schools and the town over that time. So the narrative that this is just a, a line item that is only being carried in the, in the town portion of the budget is just not accurate. And then, like I said, going forward, there's already been discussions about having that be a more equitable share based on those who are the primary users of the field. There are other people that use the field beyond the five main principles association sports that were outlined in Bob's memo. So those are the high school interscholastic sports that use it. There are other sports, both, you know, of youth athletes as well as many of our community services sports programs that utilize that turf field. The Saturday morning soccer, the Saturday or Sunday morning lacrosse programs that we run, things like that. Those are, those are athletes that are using that field that are completely separate from the school sponsored athletics. So it's a community resource. It's, it's had a known need for replacement. From the day that it was installed, we knew that this was going to be a need. That's part of, of, of having an asset like this. And I, 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 I see no problem with including it in this year's budget, particularly at the, at the expected impact that's been outlined for us by Matt and John. Other discussion? Go ahead, Matt.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just a couple of the quick items to point out. One of the items last week when you voted on refinancing the 2008 bond, one of the items that was originally financed by that was $155,000 for the, the stadium seating that is at the turf field. That was in refunding of that, which I found, you know, going through that, what did we actually purchase with that money back then? And looking at that, that just coincidentally popped up. So I thought the council would find that interesting. The other item of, of a serious nature is it's a safety concern and that, and Bob and I have talked about this. We get one kid, one player that hits the spot that's at or over 200, they, they come away concussed. They're going to have their attorney and they're going to ask person, the first question they're going to ask is, can I see your most recent G max test for that turf field? And let's just, the, the thought is that it may be more expensive than the, the replacement of the turf field if someone was found to be playing on a surface that was known to be unsafe. And that's part of the reason why we've kept this going forward. And it's about, you know, it ultimately comes down to player safety. And when something is at the end of its life, it's like you wouldn't drive your car if the brakes, if you knowingly knew that your brakes were gone. At the same time, if you knowingly knew that the field was not going to be playable and, you know, fortunately this pandemic will end at some point in time and athletics will return to the field. And it could be this fall or it could be next spring when lacrosse goes on there. They're all physical games that are played on that surface that are contact sports. And if you end up playing on an inferior surface and someone, God forbid, does get hurt, heavily concussed or further damaged, that would be, that'd be the primary concern. And just, just for the council to, to have that as a thought.
Council of Straw.
Yeah, so I, I guess to, to your point, Jamie, ultimately I, I do, do view this as a luxury item, obviously. I think about the fact that my kids, when they were playing soccer, they, obviously they're not playing at high school level, but they play soccer on grass fields. They did for multiple years. It seemed fine. Other locations, the high schoolers play in grass field. So I don't view that as needed for, for, for soccer or for a number of the other sports. So I do view it as a luxury item, obviously. When I look at the situation we're in budgetarily, it's, I want to see our society, I want to see our town devoting our resources to other uses than this for the next year. Matt does make a great point though about risk and chance of injury and whatnot. So my, my knee jerk reaction is there's not going to be sports anyways in the fall, but let's say there are. I guess I still go back to in 2006, 2008, whenever this thing was pitched, I swear, I thought that the, that the kids turf people said, hey, we're going to do this and we're going to like focus on on setting up an endowment fund. It could be I misunderstand or misunderstood what that was intended to be in that people are saying the endowment fund was the town setting up aside money each year for it. But I thought that the, the, the boosters were supposed to be setting up the endowment fund, not us. So maybe I just misunderstand that. But to the extent you want to persuade me at this point, and all of you could say, who cares? Cause if enough of you support this anyway. But if you want to persuade me to vote for this, I'd like to hear any type of proposal where we kind of etch in stone that the town isn't paying for the next replacement costs. Like what, what proposal would any of you have to make sure that the boosters or the users cover a, a large portion of this for the next time around, rather than the taxpayers?
I'm not seeing any hands raised. Bob? Go ahead, Bob.
Go ahead, Bob. Yeah, as I said, you know, Council of Garvin, I think that, you know, we could work with the superintendent schools and the athletic director to come up with a plan for the, the next replacement, which, you know, maybe we can get, you know, closer to 15 years out of it. We are using a more, more infill in this field than previously. So maybe it's 13, maybe it's 14 years. I wouldn't want to go on record as saying that, but, but I think that a plan and a dialogue with the booster clubs is something that, that we could have. You know, working with Superintendent Wolfram to come up with a plan moving forward for the next time. I don't think that that's realistic, but I think we would need to give the booster clubs a larger window or a longer window, because some of the booster clubs have more ability to raise funds than others. For example, football. They have the concession stand. Field hockey doesn't have the means to do quite the fundraising possibly. But if you gave them goals and gave them, you know, a 10 year window to do that or 10 to 12 year window, they would be put on notice for it. And maybe it's something that they sign off on and commit to as a goal for fundraising. That's just my thoughts. Matt, I'm not sure if you want to weigh in.
No, I think, I think that's probably best case scenario for the next, next round and just say, hey, we'd like you to come up with some form, how you'd like to participate when, when you do need to raise some funds. I'm not sure to the what level they may be able to raise. I think you're right. As far as some sports have a higher attendance volume than others do. I mean, football knocks the place out and soccer, quite frankly, you know, with the, the highly competitive teams they have also is a big draw. But there are others that, that don't pull as many people. So it'd be a question of talking to them and about having that engagement with them and what their level of participation they'd like to do. And it may be informative to the council as well to know what they actually do with the funds that they do raise now and how they, how they use those funds for scholarships and other areas too, that, that they may be providing opportunities to kids in the, in the community.
Penny.
I was gonna, I was gonna say similar to what Bob just said, but I was going to say set annual goals for what dollars need to be raised annually, you need to hit these targets in order to reach this 12 year mark. But that we, we need to set a policy and come together and develop that as a team to see what, what we need annually in order to make sure we aren't back here in 12 years. I probably won't be here in 12 years, but neither will Bob, so.
I keep trying to talk him back into it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say too, I, I recognize the fact that generation of athletes have played on surfaces that aren't synthetic turf. It wasn't until about, you know, 14, 15 years ago that, you know, this even became the prevalent surface that it's become today when building or replacing existing fields at the cost, you know, as, in a cost effective manner beyond pro stadiums. So, you know, we're, we're barely one installation generation through. Again, this having become from, from everything I understand, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but a, a, you know, standard installation and a standard choice for multi-purpose, multidisciplinary athletic playing surfaces, whether it be schools, colleges, other, other possible installations. So anyway, I, I just see it no different than, you know, a more advanced technology and probably any number of other things that the town, you know, budgets for over the years. And this is, this has become for me the, the current standard. So. Chris.
Last quick point. So I'm looking at the town's website, the news article from May 16th, 2006 entitled Workshop to Eye Separate Proposals for Nordic Ski Trails Artificial Turf Field. Third from last paragraph says, like the Cape Nordic Trails Project, Kids' Turf has a two-phase plan in mind, beginning with installation of an artificial surface at the lower high school fields. Lights, also funded by citizen efforts, have already arrived for installation. And this is the sentence perhaps as where my memory came from. The second phase would include a snack shack, scoreboard and bleachers, and the beginning of an endowment to fund replacement of the service in 10 to 14 years. So that could be where, why, where I'm coming up with this endowment thing from. But here we go, town's website, May 2006, the pitch from the group that wanted the thing installed, at least according to this article, said that there was something involving an endowment to fund replacement of the service in 10 to 14 years. Perhaps we're arguing now that was the town setting up the endowment, but I had understood it that it was the boosters. So for whatever it's worth, that's on the site.
Any other discussion on this point? I don't see any hands raised, but I'm not in the, in the meeting function. Nobody else. Okay. Other discussion generally on the budget? Okay. The last thing I just want to say unrelated to the turf field is I just want to thank Matt and John and all the department heads for their work to get to the point we are with this budget. I know that there's been, you know, a lot of going back and forth, obviously, literally redoing it from what was originally planned at the beginning of our budget process. As well as a continued, you know, virtually daily exercise of trying to see what other savings could be achieved, all with the Cape taxpayers in mind. So I just want to express my gratitude to the both of you and all of the rest of the staff involved in putting the budget together. I know that these kinds of exercises aren't easy and sometimes hard decisions have to be made. And appreciate all the work that you all have put into it. So if there is no further discussion from anyone, not seeing any hand raised, I'm going to call the question. So the motion on the floor is to bring forward the budget as presented to vote on Wednesday, May 27th, 2020 at 7:00 PM for the general fund budget. Motion was made by Council of Gabrielson, seconded by Council of Devereaux. Deb, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Council of Devereaux?
Yes.
Council of Gabrielson?
Yes.
Council Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Council Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Council of Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number 77 dash 2020. Fiscal year 2021 special budget funds. Similar to our general funds, we have special fund accounts with proposed expenditures of $3,816,447 and revenues of $4,017,281, all of which is detailed in the agenda here. Is there a motion on these special funds budgets? Uh, is there a motion on these special funds budgets? Anybody?
I move the, count, excuse me, I move that the council follow the pub, pub, the public hearing schedules and vote on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one special fund budgets for the town of Cape Elizabeth, Maine, for Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, at seven P.M. via the virtual Zoom platform, with proposed expenditures of three million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars, and revenues of four million, seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Moved by Council Gabrielson, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Council Penny Jordan, is there any discussion? Penny?
Yeah. Matt, I, Matt, I just wanted to highlight the kind of, um, the, the missing line in here, which now sits someplace else, which has to do with the, um, tax relief program for seniors. I just wanna make sure that people who might be out there in the public world, if they see that missing out of this version of the, uh, pro forma, that they might get a little antsy that that doesn't exist any longer. Can you kind of clarify that?
I'd be happy to. Uh, thank you, Council Jordan, I'd be happy to. Uh, it was originally identified on a, on a previous spreadsheet under special funds for, uh, senior citizen property tax relief. Uh, it is there, uh, or it's still in the budget. It's just under contributions, which is on the, uh, upper level, in the five-twenty, uh, level. But we do have eighty-five thousand dollars, uh, in this year's budget set aside for senior citizen property tax relief. And, uh, so that, that is still, uh, still continuing as a program. And, uh, we feel that the number that we do have in there is, is an accurate reflection for what, what we've seen for trending. So, but it is still included in the budget, it's just under contributions. Thank you for asking that.
And I know we've addressed this a number of times, but again, just for different audiences and for the record, um, would either you or John, Matt, like to speak to just the, um, uh, accounting and budgeting decision that was made in shifting the rescue dollars around this year? Um, 'cause I know that that's, um, confused some people, uh, on occasion, but.
Uh, I'd be happy to, and John, I know, can, can jump in as well. A couple of different things that you'll notice in this year's budget. Uh, previously, we had used, uh, uh, revenue, uh, rescue was a, uh, was a special fund. And, uh, but consistently, and for a long time, it had been running on a shortfall. So, uh, you know, speaking with John and speaking with Chief Gleason, uh, over the course of the year, I felt it was best to look at that as an, as an organizational expense or operational expense as part of the fire budget. So you'll notice that there's a, a, a large increase under fire this year, uh, as well as, uh, we're taking three hundred, using three hundred thousand dollars of unassigned funds to help offset the close to a million-dollar shortfall that's accumulated over, uh, many years, uh, to the rescue fund. So our plan is to offset that over the next three years, pay that down, and eliminate any kind of shortfall there. Include rescue in the operational budget versus looking at it as, uh, what many towns would call an enterprise fund, where you take in revenue and it helps offset it, uh, the operational expenses. Uh, but now it's been converted into a straight operational. So you'll notice that there's a change on the expense line. We also have the revenues that are generated by, uh, rescue in there. So, uh, of the roughly one-point-two-million-dollar increase that you'll see on the, uh, on the town expenditure side, nine hundred thousand dollars of that is strictly related to the change in transfer of rescue over to the operational. Uh, that's offset by the reduces, reductions on the other side. You know, it's, uh, it's out of the special funds now, so. Uh, but that's, that's one of the changes that took place this year. And, uh, going forward, then, and when you compared, looking at the pro forma compared last year to this year, that's why it looked like our expenses were, were significantly greater, and our revenues were, uh, were, were different as well. Uh, but next year, you'll notice, uh, you know, after, and after basically, uh, acclimatizing to that change of rescue coming into our operational expenditures, uh, we'll be able to compare apples to apples a lot more cleanly, uh, in the years going forward.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion on the special funds budgets? Not seeing any. Um, Council Gabrielson having moved, and Council Penny Jordan having seconded. Deb, could you give us a roll call vote, please?
Council Devereaux?
Yes.
Council Gabrielson?
Yes.
Council Caitlin Jordan? Council Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Council Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. So both of those budgets, uh, will be voted on, again, on May twenty-seventh, Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, at seven P.M. Uh, and, um, even having had the opportunity for a public hearing tonight, uh, as at any meeting, uh, folks will have the opportunity to comment on the item, as it will be an agenda item. That's the end of our agenda for this evening's meeting. Uh, is there any citizen in the public, uh, that wishes to, uh, comment, make any comment on something that was not covered on tonight's agenda, um, but pertains to town business? If you're interested in doing so, please, uh, use the raise hand function in the Zoom meeting. Okay, seeing none, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Moved by Council Penny Jordan, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Council Devereaux, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, Deb with a roll call vote.
Council Devereaux?
Yes.
Council Gabrielson?
Yes.
Council Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Council Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Council Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody participating in the discussion tonight, and we'll see you at our meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, have a good night, all.